And that will come. I'm just gonna say it's five fifty nine. Nadine is absent. And first item will be the review of the old meeting minutes from eight twenty seven to five better said. Well, we had a chance to look them over. Enter into discussion or propose a motion.
I've proposed to accept them as written. I would second.
All in favor? Uh, let's see who was there um and here was there, okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to new business and we will start with number six four two if that's okay with everybody. Let me ask.
I'm six four two.
Okay, thank you, I thought I thought by deduction you might.
You want my input on this?
Yep.
Uh, let me start with um, I'm trying to review some team when I learned it being management association in terms of setting these things up, so we're talking about permit number six four two, map lot oh oh one oh oh nine. It is in the rural area, is eleven point two acres. Uh, all of this information is on the application, it's an eight, the job site is eight twelve Albion Road Unity Ian Morpheu?
Correct.
Okay, and it's a thirty by forty foot garage on concrete pad for storage. Twelve hundred square feet, seventeen foot high. Uh, will be in discussion?
It's not big enough.
It never is.
It never is.
I thought that the owner has standing, so we're okay there. And then the permit is uh for an accessory structure, does anyone disagree with that description? That is greater than a hundred square feet?
No.
So the type of permit being a married is correct and the permitted sign and that is a we always have to advise the applicant that it is your responsibility to work with the state fire marshal for any requirements that they might have, that's the obligation of the applicant. And then um it's building locating or relocating any structure greater than a hundred square feet. And that's just sort of the header information I wanted to get on the table. Anything else?
Well, I checked now, you've got probably eighty to ninety feet from the first property line, but nice big property, plenty of room to stick this thing, probably, I don't know, everything off the road, so uh, pretty fun to drive us to the air.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We do have a little bit of uh, hi everybody, we do have a little bit of uh, flood plain and resource protection. But it's major, major farm, so we've just acknowledging that.
Yep, uh, so Brian Erickson will make a motion to approve permit number six four two, map one lot nine with no conditions, I'll second it.
All in favor?
What uh, what's the status of that other building that you have up front, we approved that one a month ago?
Well, we got one there, we were planning to build it in the office today, we're doing this kick.
Yep.
Um, we didn't decide to, uh, I think we should still have a name to recover our own because the kids. So we've got plenty of time to build that one, but what I'm just about to do, uh, did put floors in one which is likely collapsed.
Yeah.
Yeah. So right now, it will actually build the roof over the top of it, just try and protect the condo. Um, and then we'll get to that one, I should have a house.
Yep.
Cool. So just figured regarding to us, I'm gonna be keeping away for a little bit longer.
What would the um, do with?
Okay, um, we'll be signing, did you already sign the copy in there because it wasn't, I don't see them.
The insurance been signed.
Let me double check this one.
I've got copies here with my signature if you wanna sign that.
Perfect, great.
That's the other copy right there. And if you need it. I'll get that phone. Maybe I know the password for the guest here, for the wifi, yeah.
I do, but I have to look it up in the central for you.
If I can. Hey Derek, it's your last.
Zane.
Zane, yeah, I thought so. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, I'm gonna set um wait, wait a minute, I gotta do a little paperwork here. Let me take um, six four three and send it aside just for a second for our process here and we'll come right back to it. Moving on to six four four, if that's okay with everybody. Let's discuss the overview of that, it's a permit six four four, map oh one three oh two six oh one, it is rural. It's eight point three seven acres per the tax commitment book. It's at job size one sixteen, State Coach Road, James Porter. James Porter here, anyone represent James Porter, okay, great. It's a shipping container with a roof overlay forty by thirty, twelve hundred square feet, it's replacing two old wood sheds and I believe, I see it as an accessory structure, does anybody disagree?
I see it as that as well.
Okay, and uh, owner has standing. The permit is required uh because it's a building locating or relocating any structure more than one hundred square foot. The permit is signed. And from there we can move on to any discussion.
Yeah, that's cool.
It's a pretty basic shipping container, it's replacing a structure that are that may have demolished. He's gonna use it to house some some wood knowing equipment, I think, uh, overhand built over it, uh, like firewood. It's gonna sit on a gravel pad, so he's got plenty of room to set back.
I'll make a motion to approve uh permit number six four four. One second.
All in favor? Motion is passed. Lot six four five, Peter Brady. Thank you very much. To the record or do you uh, this is for standing because it's the foundation, I may have to do it tomorrow morning?
I should have a copy in the property file here.
Okay. Per application, right?
Was that?
We need it per application.
What's that letter?
Because we already have one in the file, but we don't have this.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying I will need that in the property file.
Oh, I thought you said you have.
No, no, I will need that.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you correctly, I apologize. Yes, thank you very much. And it's uh, six forty five. We have map lots six forty five, uh, sorry, nine, ten for permit six forty five, forgive me. And applicant is Peter Brady, this is for um Bassett Foundation at ninety two Elwell Farm Road, one point eight three acres. This is a concrete pad that exists there, but there'll be a wood in fabric, you're twenty four foot in diameter. Approximately four hundred and fifty two square feet. Because there will not be ongoing occupancy or wastewater or services, I thought it was an accessory dwelling. I mean, I needed accessory structure.
It's a accessory dwelling and a hooking man to, but the yard itself is not a dwelling, there is going to be a camper on site people may stay in and that would be a uh hooked up to an existing septic system, uh, septic system that was inspected last year.
So our permit. You're intending us to permit the wheel?
I'm intending to permit the yard.
That's what, oh, so if I'm just discussing the yard?
No.
Then I see the yard itself as an accessory structure?
Yeah, the yard would be an accessory.
Okay, okay, great. And we have the letter. Any discussion or nothing?
Make a motion to approve permit number six forty five. No conditions, I'll make a second.
All in favor? That not remembering the whole, that's assigned somewhere. There we go. Thanks for coming here. Alright, so I think we're coming back in to
Six forty six.
Six forty six. Come in six forty six, map thirteen, lot thirty eight A. And this is Gunner Martin. And the property is owned by Vera McCormick, we had a signature done or have that in?
I didn't, Gunner did not submit a letter to me, I requested one, I mean, you've got a signature from the applicant, but I was just hoping that we might find an actual letter stating she knew he was gonna build.
Did you prefer to make this conditional then?
I I thought I would make it conditional, um, I I know that there is family member of Gunner, I'm sure it won't be an issue, but I can recheck out to Gunner and get that letter from him. So I'm fine.
I could go either way because we do have landowner signature.
Yeah. I mean.
She's her, his grandmother's.
Yeah, I I I think in this particular case, I'm okay with moving forward with it, I'll leave discretion to the board and I wanna approach it.
I would recommend that we accept the uh landowner's signature and the court was not will.
Agree.
With signature from. And uh, it's uh on sixty point three three acres per the tax commitment book. It's a camp less than four hundred and ninety nine square feet, fourteen by twenty. No, no services to be connected. Open that for discussion.
I would actually make a motion to approve this as is with the signature of the landowner.
It's on the form, so I agree.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor? And I thank you again for being relayed. So we're gonna go back to nine four three. Six four three, thank you, it takes a village. Let me just have recommendation on this one, I um, I think we should step through it in order of uh the issues that occur in the ordinance. Because there are some where the board is gonna need to look at some things and make some interpretations that are stated in the ordinance is being board discretion. So we have a purchase agreement on file, I'm told for Shane.
Yep.
Is a purchaser of the building and uh
The property, right?
The property, thank you, thank you, thank you. And this is the relocation of the pharmacy that is currently in the Edwards grocery building.
Yep.
And it's so it is going to come under commercial. It is in the downtown area, but it is also under retail growth, so we have all of those things to consider. The fee has been paid. And I have to advise the applicant that uh state fire marshal, if if there's anything related to them, it would be your obligation to check that. Permit is required because we're uh constructing a new driveway. Constructing, expanding and paving certain lots in the downtown district, in this case fourteen spaces. And building, locating and relocating a structure uh greater than a hundred square feet. And then we will have occupancy. Okay. Brian, you wanna take us through what your concerns are and then you know, I'll chime in. Sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was only concerned that this was replacing the pharmacy or if it was a competing pharmacy, Brian had more questions. Can you just overthrow?
No, the state passed a law this year that said retail pharmacies cannot sell tobacco products, which is not an issue. Thirty years, we've never sold tobacco products in any of our pharmacies, but line B of the bill says that there's a retail pharmacy, if there's a retail store with a pharmacy located inside of it, then retail store can't have a tobacco license. Yeah, it doesn't make any sense at all.
Yeah.
And there's nine of us that are affected by this in state or Kent down by Scopper, so my lease runs out in April. And I don't expect Jeremy to lose those sales because he's not only gonna lose those sales. He's gonna lose all the sales that go along with it, they're not gonna go to depot, wherever else to buy the tobacco product, drive back to whatever else they'll get by the time they're there. So it's a substantial hit for him, so it's just happened to follow me that my lease is running out in April. And a lot of things affect people first, so we'll like scrap and try to do this thing down, I think we're gonna pull it off, but so uh that's why we're doing, we we wouldn't vote wasn't for that.
Yeah.
We're forcing our people.
Cool, um, so let's see, uh, my, we have it's my understanding there is something in the works, but we do not have a copy from the existing unity utility district.
Correct, I submitted the application and paid for it. Um, my, my mistake is that I had dropped it off here a month ago, I didn't realize it was, they were separate.
Sound problem, we're just glad to hear that you have that underway, it may cause us to have to hold the approval pending the receipt of that. Just because there isn't a great conditional follow-up process, as long as that won't uh unduly affect you, it sounds like your building's been ordered.
It has, the only next critical step is to try to get the concrete in before we get involved.
Okay, so that's your critical path.
Yeah.
Kind of chime in there, uh, since I've been in unity, which I know is only until last March, it's kind of been the understanding that we let people put, do uh do earthwork and foundations, that was structural.
It's your risk, yeah, so we can do that, we can do a conditional proof on that.
Yeah, the property owner usually assumes the risk in that case and I always make sure to note that they're assuming the risk, but we never held somebody up from doing earthwork and foundational work before the permits issued.
Yeah, that's true.
Do you guys know that correctly the turnaround time on those applications?
Well, let me take us through this and let's see what we come out with, we may, we've got, this is, it got a lot of substance to it, so we have to check, okay. But anyway, then we'll make note of that one item, um, so that will, that will be required. And I noted on the plan that there was a well, that's a new well, is that correct?
There is no well.
No well, we have to put it on.
There is a new well, is what I said, I'm sorry.
You have to add a well.
Yes, they do, yes, there's a new well on the plan.
Yeah.
Yes, perfect, okay, so then normally with a well, if you're gonna use it for drinking water or for employees or whatever, there would be proof of adequate and potable water. And so, is that underway?
Yeah, do that until we drill a well.
We have to drill the well first, yeah.
Exactly, so that's what I'm asking on your timetable on that.
Um, I hadn't taken that, I have, somebody set up that will come in and do it.
And you'd be glad to go ahead with the risk as well on that one there, okay?
Yes.
I think we're about here, okay, so don't worry, okay. And then uh we have a driveway. Um, and I do notice that you've got the twenty two feet wide, so that looks good, and so we need uh the CEO and road commissioner on that one.
Um, it's a state maintained road, I believe, right?
Right.
So, yeah, typically, D O T gives approval, we don't have jurisdiction there.
It's weird that way our ordinance is written, I don't know if you've looked at it, but it.
Yeah, certainly, we looked at it, but typically the town wouldn't get involved in.
What I mean is, as the board, we look at that and we just say, it's gotta happen.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, meaning that approval's gotta come from wherever it's gotta come from, and here it cites our road commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, are you asking me to go down and?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
No, it's it's D O T that's.
It's D O T, Tony would, Tony would say the same thing to you, Tony would say, you know, I know it says that, but it's gonna be D O T. Yeah, so we get it. You're good. Okay, there's no develop, it says type one or type two, we don't, we don't deem it to fall under any of the criteria for type one or type two unless anyone else on the board in their research found that to be different, I did.
I did not.
It does not fall into that criteria, so there's no development review. That's a very good news. Very good news, okay. And then um, commercial occupancy by the CEO is what will take place. It's an existing lot, correct?
We're not actually two lots.
Two lots.
Lots two and three.
Well, it's, may I speak up for that? I think it was surveyed as two lots, the town doesn't have it on record, Joe, maybe you have some knowledge here, we don't have it in our tax records currently, it's two separate lots. Surveyed as two, town has it as in two. Why I checked, I saw just the one.
Me too.
On some maps it shows up as one and others it shows up.
Yeah, we would acknowledge that there appear to be some discrepancies.
Yeah, but it's.
It's not meaningful, except when we have to look at uh, a new lot or a lot size thing. I would just note that it it's a smaller than, uh, small lot and, but that's alright, a new business.
It's a survey lot as well, so there shouldn't be any issues.
A new business can go there, no problem. We just start checking through the, what we've got to check through and and that would appear to be fine.
And you're purchasing both, part one, both?
The whole thing.
It's in the retail growth district, so happy news there.
Is it everybody there, they all know exactly where it is, it's directly across from the speedway, it's in front of Old Home Park, Epic Fields.
Just the other side of the.
Vehicle like.
Yeah, hardware store, that thing, yeah.
Do you want to see picture or no?
No.
Just making sure everybody knew where it was.
Yeah. We got some empty land out there by the slather house, you can put it up there.
What, you don't wanna go there? At least we can still laugh.
Life's not worth living if we can laugh.
Under special performance standards, land use ordinance uh seven page thirty, if you wanna look. It requires um for greater than ten vehicles, a six foot landscape buffer between the parking and the road. The plan shows fourteen spaces. Uh, may I hear input from the rest of the board on that topic?
From what I can see on the diagram, it does show enough footage clearance from the roadway to where the parking lot would actually start.
Yes, um, the question is, in adjacent properties, as I went up and down the street, it would appear to be unique for us to cite that that was necessary. Um, so as a board, I might personally, is one little board member just equal to y'all, I would look at it and say there's enough existing non-conformity to that ordinance that I wouldn't feel given to bring that up and apply it. Okay, and I will put that on the form here, would all of you agree? Okay. Talk to us about um traffic, please.
Per day, so I have the ability with my software to do a customer house, so we're around ninety on average.
So that's less than a hundred car trips per day, which trips are unique things in ordinance and therefore I feel it doesn't apply. Okay, so then we need to talk about aesthetics in terms of the downtown area and the board's obligation to take a look at a few things. I suggest that, let's start with a building type and color.
So um, we can, what we wanted was gray. So it's a metal, it's a metal outside building, black metal roof.
You just meant the ordinance already, the ordinance would caution the board not to have it be, you know, some
Purple?
Terrible color, let's talk about. Dylan, would you like to take the, take us all through the issue related to the roof?
Um, I mean, I've talked about it some, I'm just trying to find that, I'm literally looking up that part of the uh the, the roof standards now to find the exact.
Check page thirty nine through forty three.
Yeah, I just got it up with this little search function. So on the specific provisions in the uh performance standards for the downtown district. Um, just said that there's little portions of roofs of new buildings shall not follow one of many traditional styles, including gable hip and embrown. Gable roofs shall be pitched at a minimum of seven or eight twelve. But they can be brought down to, it looks like five twelve. Um, or as low as six twelve on traditional side, style of buildings, if the building is um uh, you know, large enough that a, you know, eight twelve or cheaper would go of, trying to speak to purpose of it. One of the other kind of situations in here is that roof lines can be broken up by other gables, you know, like notice some buildings downtown may have a flat roof but have an entryway with some sort of pitched gable roof in front of it, so there's a few options, like it's, it's not saying that you gotta have the seat pitch, but you gotta break up the roof line somehow, which um, I think in this particular case Shane is talking about, I mean, he's got a couple of different options here. I think his original design that I submitted to you guys is like a uh, a four twelve roof pitch.
Three twelve, three twelve roof pitch.
May I ask you an important question?
Yeah.
Um, the board is called to ask whether a person walking by would reasonably notice whether this roof pitch is quite unusual.
I don't believe so.
I think a three twelve roof pitch is as traditional as any other.
Thank you, then the board would not have any obligation to go in on that topic.
I think a four pitch would be.
It's actually gonna be four twelve.
It's gonna be four twelve.
I think a four pitch would look very reasonable, yeah, so, yeah.
Alright. Yeah, this.
You're good. You're good, then the board would have no obligation, um, if a re, a person walking by would not reasonably notice that as being unusual in the design area, we're okay, board, do you agree?
Never.
Okay. Um, so color, and then there's, it is a steel finish. And I did drive up and down and look at, think right across the street is a major big gray steel building. Uh, the hardware store, not for the main building, but adjacent to it for the largest part of their building, the storage building has steel in that structure in bright red. Um, anybody have any concerns or comments, those are the items we're called to take a look at.
No concerns or comments, I think it would fit perfectly and would surround a structure.
So then you would deem it to be compatible with the traditional. So then you would deem it to be compatible with the traditional character of the town?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, we're also, unless, um, the downtown design guidelines apply, and they do, in addition to a development review, then we are not, as a board, required per ordinance on page forty-two to invoke the need of a design committee for this project. Does the board agree? Which is maybe why Salvi's looking at me.
I agree.
It's mine. Okay. Um. And then, uh, do we have, we have a protected area at the back, very far, far distant of the area, but so far that it falls within no guideline that I can find applicable
Mm-hmm.
in terms of possibility of contamination of water.
I did look for that. Yeah.
Do we all agree?
Agree.
Okay. Um, so we're saying there's no landscape buffer required, I'll have this in the detailed notes for decisions of law and findings of facts instead of putting it in the meeting minutes, because that's what me and the association, you know, recommends.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. And then, uh, lighting and signage are the next topics. Would you, anyone?
Clearly you're asking.
Yes.
I I'm sorry, I was trying to see what what was gonna come out on that.
Potential lighting for a parking area or outside.
Yeah, so we'll have, um, there'll be lights on the outside of the building that light up the perimeter and then um, it's not on hushes drawing, but there will be two downlines that will be right in front of the store.
Yes. Those are the magic words. And then, uh, you'll comply with, uh, lighting requirements in the ordinance, and you'll review that, make sure you're unbiased.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure Dylan will as well. How about the topic of signage?
So typically what we do in our stores is we do like a reading sign that have lights that kinda point down onto it, we don't typically put on road signs, let out there's a lot of meetings to it, I think they're ugly. So we're trying to, we're trying to promote a professional looking building, so my my vision is to have a signage on the gable line. We are gonna dress up the front, there's gonna be a hip roof that breaks up that line, so people can get in and out, and they'll get, you know, wet. Uh, so my initial, uh, that's okay, we can pull in a different one, perhaps a light.
So the board, we have to determine if we're addressing signage within this application, or if if there's enough known, or we would need an application later when more is known. Um, if if the applicant agrees to comply with, uh, the ordinance related to signage
Mm-hmm.
uh, and it come forward with another application, should you need to vary from that, would that suffice to the board?
Hmm, suffice.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is the name list gonna be unitary?
Yeah.
Okay, it's gonna say it.
Yep.
So, um, now we'll we'll come back and talk, speak as a a group, uh, then we need to have discussion as to the approval method, if we choose to approve or deny or table or contingency, what would you like to do?
Let's talk about the, uh, conditions that we will be set, uh, if we were to approve this today.
Okay, so what would you, would it be helpful if I take you through that?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, subject to compliance with lighting and signage ordinances. Um. Subject to the application, accepting our corrections to the application as related to the type of project. In other words, our approval will not be for a one or two.
Okay.
That's good, you're fine.
Okay.
I actually type one, type two, correct.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you don't wanna go there.
No.
More days, more time. Um, and do, how about the landscaping buffer, we're gonna say no, so we're not gonna do anything on that.
Yeah.
Um. We need approval by the U D Utilities District. And Department of Transportation for the driveway.
It's been paid for.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you're good, this is just gonna obligate you to, you know, do that, and then, um, uh, that the well be adequate and potable. And and maybe I miss anything?
Um, about allowing the groundwork to be conducted.
Actually, um, yeah, I'm gonna say that, um, technically it says that work cannot begin until you have an approved application, we're gonna approve it with contingency,
but if we do approve this, then it's all good.
which should give you the latitude that I think you're meeting.
Okay.
Does that sound okay with you guys? Everybody, it's
Yes. Sounds with the.
All for one and one for all.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, yes.
Up to speed.
Okay. Just double checking. Okay, um, do you have a motion?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve with the conditions of the DOT driveway permit, lighting and signage ordinances being complied with, the corrections being made to the application as to the type of the project. Um, as well as the U D Utilities District signing off on the project, and that the well will be adequate and potable.
And Department of Transportation.
Yeah, you said that.
Yeah, that was the first, that was the first condition.
What did you say? I'm sorry. I was writing, obviously, we didn't have a writing, but, okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Our Utilities, so what is the typical time?
November, yeah. I would not familiar with the energy, so I would not answer that question.
She new to that? Fairly new to that?
Who, that woman over there? I hear, I know nobody over there.
Anybody know she moved to that position?
I have no idea.
Our economic developer for the town, I worked with him, Chris Lucy, Chris Lucy. And he spoke with somebody at Utilities before we even put down the budget, but to be sure that we would be able, there'd be nothing to stop us from hooking up. I don't know who they spoke to, I thought he said a Mike or Michael, um, John Condon, it was a John, of course.
Good job, Condon retired out, but.
Right, but he's in terms of knowledge, John probably has the most knowledge of anybody about our district, our sewer district.
You're right.
Anybody in town, so he has told us unofficially, I guess, because he's not that passionate, but he said, no problem, I'm passionate. So now we can get it from the next person, who, as I understand, just took over that not long ago.
She had a very quick answer.
She was, everybody says excellent email, don't call it. I understand. Pick other people here, yeah, we all.
See, there's plenty of, uh, like the way the driveway is putting everything, land besides it. Future plans or other businesses?
I don't, I mean, this is literally thrown in our lap less than a month ago, um, one and a half probably. So, we've just been strangled while we're trying to figure out, hey, there's nothing, there's nothing for sale, I mean,
Yeah.
this lane wasn't for sale, we had to use Joey while, I don't know, it's the stuff for us, so, um.
Found some other ones.
Yeah. But I think by the time we get done with that project, it's gonna be a longer town.
Mm-hmm.
That's what good, we have, you know, very.
And just so you guys are aware, half the town fits at McDonald's coming in. Unbelievable.
How about that?
We can frank.
All it takes is one word.
Yeah.
So, I kinda, I mean, just, just saw you, I was on the front of the store, and you were like, what's going on there? I was like, I said, so you heard it was McDonald's too? I did, and I was just like, good for you, and I walked away. I said, why don't you go to the planning board meeting tonight, and you can find out what it is, and they didn't take the other one, so. Can we just put little baby golden orchids out there?
I can put that as a condition, dude.
Question, do you, are you gonna put those, a copy of the approval documents anywhere, or how does that work, or should I sign them all?
What, um.
I'm happy to sign it.
I'll take them out of the binder and put them in the profit files.
And should I sign?
You should sign them, yeah.
Your copy, and so I'll come in tomorrow morning and do that.
Yeah, it's fine, I'll leave them right in the binder, and we're in here next cell, transforming.
Thank you. We have more business over the board, if you guys are all set, you're welcome to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good to see you, yes, stand here, thanks for coming in.
Very nice to see you.
Get ahold of me, change, just email me when you get some of that stuff together.
Okay, all right, well, thanks a lot.
How much sure is that right now?
He is, someone said hi.
Yes, Sydney, yeah.
I wanna make sure that everybody, uh, who doesn't have them gets a copy of U D bylaws, our planning board bylaws. Make sure you have that, Dylan, do you need them?
No, I think I'll be, uh, talking to someone, so.
That's just not for discussion, I'm just getting that, so I make sure that everybody has it, sometimes it's not in the books for new members. Um, also wanted to talk about the main, uh, municipal association training sessions, um, there's one up coming here, and let's see, it is on October twenty-eighth from um, in person. Uh, let's see, what's it, the workshops, four thirty P M to eight thirty P M, but you can also do a Zoom, which is what I'm gonna do. I would tell you that I took that, um, several years ago when I first got on the board, it's amazing what you don't know that you don't know. And this position does carry liability with it, should we not follow the laws and the ordinances? And, um.
You're really looking at me.
No, I'm not, no, I'm sorry, let me look up at the. You're new.
Yeah, I am.
Um, but so, if for nothing else, and and just to do a great job, um. There there have been a number of times when I've been sitting here and I've, there've been debates about things, and like, let me give you an example of one. Um, there, we have a lot of people in town that, um, their farms are under land trust agreements with land trust. And it says they can only do certain kind of building. If I walked in here and I hadn't been trained by many municipality authorities, I would think that I had to be obligated to that, and I would probably get lost and not follow our own ordinances. It's just the opposite, it's bound between those two parties. We have nothing to do with it, we don't even look at it. And so we have to go back and follow ordinance, um, and I saw that in one of our own meetings where that was not known. So we can make some, that's just one tiny example of some everyday stuff, or we can make mistakes, if we don't know this stuff, plus it changes all the time. So I would highly encourage you, please consider it, does anybody need?
I did just receive an email for this today.
Oh, okay, gee, I didn't know she said that to everybody.
She said.
Um, I'll be doing it at my home on Zoom, and as long as we, everybody agrees not to discuss any planning board business. We, you actually could watch it with me if you wanted to, I'd be happy to have a little training part. And, um, Dylan, I'm assuming you're covered.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're good. Okay. All right. So then the second thing is, um, each year, and in the bylaws, it says that there's, uh, we elected chairman and officers, and the officers are chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. We kinda skipped through that in April, presumably because of the five pillars, um, enormity of all that was going on. Um, now John, in in the office, um, and sure thank him for all he did, um, has resigned on vice chair, that's the only reason I'm running yet. I got ready for this meeting, I was just that role, but now we need to elect a chairman and vice chairman. And then we need to check in with Brian as related to the secretary position. Um, so I open the floor for discussion on those topics.
Are you open to taking the position of chair?
I would be open, I thought that, I didn't think I would, but I would try it until April, and then revisit how I felt and how people felt about me. Um, and I would make it clear to you that you'll see like some changes I was doing tonight. I'm making sure that we have documentation of findings of facts and decisions of law, and that they'll be attached to the applications.
So can I make a motion to nominate, or?
Somebody else might be, I mean, you would be a great chair, you would be a great chair, you know.
Oh, oh. No, Mike, so Mike does not wanna be chair.
Nor vice chair, nor vice chair, and I'm already the secretary, and I'm happy to stay in the secretary position.
You are, oh, uh, so you're so amazing attitude.
I am.
So is there any talk about other members coming in, because you're.
Yes, so the good thing is, I'm so excited with Gary, we have, uh,
Lady.
and I, there's a gentleman by the name of, um, David Allen.
My neighbor, yeah.
Yes.
Who's Gary, Gary, can you speak to?
David is, uh,
I don't really sound for someone.
was a game warden in Maine, yeah, or, yeah, in Waldo County, and then I believe up in Carusen County for many years, so he's moved on the Stevens Road at full-time probably within the last year, so my wife saw him at, uh, Freedom's Edge, and, uh, was.
I had gotten to her before then.
Oh, okay.
I said, you know a lot of people, you'll know somebody great.
Yeah, yeah, so she, she said, he, he, you know, he's very thoughtful, and he expressed sincere interest, I believe he's on a six-week hunting expedition right now, so from, that's from my wife to me, it's saying that he probably won't be available, but he was very interested in joining the committee and getting involved in town.
Yeah, I spoke to him this morning, he called.
Oh, okay.
And I had met him at Freedom's Edge
Yeah.
that day, I had said to Nancy, if you know somebody, because I'm new to town, right? And and I could hardly hear goodbye the band, there was a really bad band, no, it was a good band, like that Gary's lead singer ended up, and, uh, and he, so he came over and said, oh, I'm really interested, I'm and I s- I almost tried to dissuade him by telling him, well, now are you willing to spend like three, four hours researching ordinances and really preparing? Are you willing to, are you willing, yeah, but, no, I mean, they.
Who does that?
Are you willing to maybe consider taking a class, are you willing to, uh, maybe have one of us at least show you how to do that process? Um, where you follow ordinances, this is not based on opinion. And, um, and I explained the liability topic, and you know, and after all that, and having to listen to that horrible music, he, I was still interested, so he called this morning, and he said that he will make an effort, uh, he was supposed to get an email to Charlin, because she, you know, a new person has to submit a request to the selectmen saying they're interested. And, uh, she hasn't got it yet, but I'm assuming in the next couple of days, but he's running between hunting and telecommunications, you know. So the guy's really trying. And, um, he said he would make an effort to do the October meeting. So that would leave us one more member um, to get a really good vibe going, and we've had good membership, they're good people, and, um, that would be.
We've got Stevens Road represented there.
Yeah.
Gary, I have a question for you, would you entertain being the vice chair until we reassess in April?
Um, so what is that role?
So, let me explain the the, unless you want to, I.
Because I know, I'm still like.
Right, you are very, I'm somewhat overwhelming, but.
You want?
No, please, it's your.
You do it, um, so, first of all, you should know that the chairman has no more power, oh, it's an equal in every way, and I'm not
Right, yeah, yeah.
or I, if you, like, uh, the chair is not even authorized to go do business on behalf of the board without approval from the board. And so, let's say, we think we need somebody for this upcoming housing, uh, the change that's gonna come into play at the end of the year, or beginning of new year, to do uh, the entry into the ordinances, a professional job, then I would have to come to you and say, may I have permission to go to speak to somebody to get that done? And so it's, it's not a road, kinda you just do what you're supposed to do, but before meetings, your obligation is to work with the CEO and the town office and to get the paperwork together, which I have to tell you, with Dylan is just a dream, because he does so much that has never been done before and does it so well. And, um, so he even prepared, he said, do you mind if I do the agenda, I'm going like, do I get three more wishes, you know? So, um, but we don't, we also want you, your priority to be to have the time in the field, so I'm personally open to helping with any or all of those things. So the, the vice chairman, then, if I can't make a meeting, then you would run it, but the way Linda works is, I would hope that I would teach you in advance, kinda how this works, and I would give it to you in writing how to do it, so that you can fill in seamlessly at any time.
Has anybody had a discussion with Nate Jean, if she was interested in one of these positions?
No, but she wasn't here tonight, and she didn't contact me to say that she
Yeah. True, and she's very.
was interested, and I did send out an email, she knows, saying to you guys, be ready, that we're gonna elect a chair.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'm prepared to make a motion that we elect Linda as the chair of the planning board.
All in favor? All in favor?
I would stay.
And how about vice chair? You're welcome.
I, I'm not, not ready yet just to jump into that role. I, you know, I'm, I'm still getting my feet wet, so. For me, I, I wanna do a, a good job, and I'm, I'm not at the level, or I don't have the confidence yet of, you know, I'm relying on you folks for a lot of the decisions. So I, I'm just kinda leering, but that's, that's just me. So I would respectfully decline at this point.
Yeah, we can revisit this topic, given on that forefront.
Can I make a motion to table the election of the vice chair until, um, or voters, yeah, are present? That's the.
Okay. All in favor?
Maybe if I get the password.
I didn't even get for you yet, that is why, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
No, that's okay, wait till next meeting.
I had my head busy, but I can get it to you right now.
And then what is the date for next month's?
Uh, that's on the agenda here, so, we got, I wanted to talk about November episode two, here we go. All right. Here it is, it's capital T O, like two, guest, zero four nine eight eight.
T O guest, it's on the border there, in the red.
Good eye, good eye.
That was never here, it's been there for years, it happens. No, I got totally just remembered.
Sorry, Gary, I forgot that you asked that, I apologize. And secretary, Brian, are you willing to, you're willing to continue through?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do another, um, election in April at the first meeting after the board.
How do you want that noted in the script?
And maybe we have a motion, um.
I didn't hear what the motion was. Uh, can you make a motion that I retain the position of secretary? Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. And all in favor? Okay. Anything else that wants to cover, questions, thoughts, concerns? Oh, you wanted to talk about the dates.
Yes.
Sorry, let's sit over here, we've got too much, too many notes here. All right, so October, the Wednesday is ten twenty-five, I believe that, that's the fourth Wednesday. I don't see any reason to change that. Is everybody good with that?
But I cannot make it that, that day, so I'll be. No, no.
It's, uh, the twenty-second.
That's a Monday.
No, is it twenty-second?
Twenty-second is the fourth Wednesday.
Thank you so much. And then November, we have Thanksgiving, so the question is, do you wanna move it back? And I'm just trying to get it so you guys know what your calendars are. So November would normally be the twenty-sixth, but that's Thanksgiving Eve. Would you like to do it the nineteenth?
It is the third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday? And Dylan, it's a next few weeks, so.
Yeah, um, I won't be here the, the Thanksgiving, so, um, the nineteenth would be better.
Nineteenth would be better, okay. All in favor? Okay, I don't think we need a formal motion, but we're just, and I just wanted to see. And then, uh, for December, uh, how about Wednesday, the seventeenth, because of the Christmas holiday?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll be back in the normal routine on January. That's all I have.
I'm assuming summer months are busier, or?
Yeah, so just to put in our perspective of busy, as when I came in tonight, I had no applications in my bylaws over that coming in the past week.
Wow.
Which me, and we only had just five applications tonight, as opposed to I think twelve at last.
That was the most I've ever seen, that last one.
I think we had had a couple of them ranging nine to ten. Um, so there's been a definite slowdown already, uh, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
All in favor? I gotta guess what it comes.
Thank you so much.